All right, it is ten A M on Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, and all members of the Commissioners' Court are here and present. This regular meeting is called to order. Everyone will please rise for the invocation delivered by Commissioner Cook, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings that you've given us. Lord, I ask you to lead down and direct our decisions today as we conduct the business of the county. I ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all made that sound much better than normal. Thank y'all. Item number three is to consider and possibly approve the September ninth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting that is presented by the Honorable County Beckton County Clerk. Much liked Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number four, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams County Treasurer to cancel all registered claims from September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and approval of the cash statement presented today. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents. On our cash report summary and general checking account, we have four hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. First Financial Bank, General Checking, Special Money Market, twenty-two million, seven hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred three dollars and four cents. And Texpool General, three hundred sixty-five thousand, thirty-four dollars and ninety-six cents for a total in cash funds of twenty-three million, five hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Would you approve this presentation?
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Number five is authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Candace McKinney, County Audit. Good morning, Ms. McKinney.
Good morning. Pre-approved expenditures for September tenth through the eleventh were eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents. Pre-approved expenditures for September seventeenth through the eighteenth were six hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty cents. Expenditures for Commissioners' Court on today, September twenty-third, are one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. We have one additional bill payable to Crowe L L P for the F R twenty-four professional audit services. It's a progressive bill of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Total expenditures and transfers were two million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and two cents. The gross payroll for September eighteenth was six hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars and twenty-seven cents. The total transfer for that payroll was one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. McKinney. Item number six is a presentation by Mrs. Katie Pace, the AgriLife Extension Agent, and she's gonna bring some friends up here to help her present the Texas A and M Harden County AgriLife Extension Office update. Good morning.
Good morning. It is the end of our, well, let me rephrase that. The end of the four H year was August thirty-first. We are now in a new four H year. It runs just like a school year. So this is a wrap-up of everything that we got to do this year. You did get a copy of our annual interpretation that we do as far as all the documents go, but for the youth side of it, I'm gonna let them come talk about what they did. And then when it gets to the adult, at the bottom, I'll give you a quick summary of what we've done with adult programming. So, come on, whoever wants to go first.
She says she's ready to get it over with.
All right, this is Sadie Friesmeyer.
I'm Sadie Friesmeyer, and I show pigs and chickens, and I do livestock judging.
She was actually on the second place team for our livestock judging contest at the South Texas State Fair this year.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Next.
Hi, my name is Katelye Abercrombie. I'm currently the Harden County four H President as long as a District Nine four H Council member. In this past year, I've shown turkeys, chickens, and pigs. Pigs are a new thing that we're trying for county. Um, and lately this summer, I participated in the Texas Youth and Livestock Advocacy Academy, which that's a week-long course where we go to the Capitol and we hear from senators and hear from industry leaders, where we participated in storytelling workshops and worked on getting our message heard, as long as getting stuck in a Capitol elevator for over twenty minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Haley is the first district four H officer we have had in we don't know how long. Um, Tammy, I asked Tammy, and she said, we haven't had ones since she's been here, so before twenty-twelve.
Congratulations. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Audrey Moody. I'm a senior at Harden Jefferson High School, and I'm also a four H Texas Equine Ambassador. So I've shown horses in the district, state, and also regional level. This was the first year for me to participate at regionals, which is for four H, the thirteen southeastern states, and I was the only Texas representative there. And we did place top ten in three events, so it was super exciting. So in two thousand twenty-four, I also did the Advocacy Academy. It's a really fun experience, but because of that, I was able to apply to the Build a Bill program, which this last year was the first year for four H to have it, and I was able to propose a mock bill to legislators at, in Austin. Um, I worked with the team. We had a one pager. We had mentors, and we got to go around to different offices saying, here's our idea. Let's pitch it. What do you think? What could we've done better? This, it was a lot of, it was a lot of fun, and I learned a lot more about politics than I ever thought I would.
Lot of fun.
Yes, sir.
Did your bill pass?
Um, no.
It happens. Don't worry about it.
You can come back in two years and try again.
And I know she's not gonna brag on herself, but she was a scholarship recipient for the American Quarter Horse um, Youth Horse Development Program. That is where there are numerous different ranches that actually provide them with yearlings. Um, if they win the scholarship program, they go through a whole year with those, and she was actually the winner out of everybody that did it as the grand champion. I'm not quite sure. Is it just, they just call it grand champion? So she was the champion out of all the other kiddos that were in that program, so.
Congratulations, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely amazing movie. All right, Leah? This is Ms. Leah Abercrombie.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have shown pigs, turkeys, and chickens. Pigs and turkeys are new things for me, and I've been able to be able to participate in work with working. I've been able to use multiple new different tools in this project.
Nice. Nice, very nice, yeah.
All right, Alden, your hands.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Alden Jelzner, pronounced like out N, and I'm currently the Vice President of the four H Homeschool Harden County Club. Um, I got first place last year in the science fair for District Nine in the junior category, and I'm looking forward to showing animals, but I haven't shown any yet.
So you'll start next year?
Hopefully.
All right. We'll be forward to hearing about it next year.
I've also, I got first place in the talent show for D nine as playing piano, which I'm very good at.
Much more. Wish we had one here.
I've also done a lot of STEM stuff in my four H homeschool club, and I'm technically a part of two clubs in Harden County.
Pretty active, yeah. Congratulations.
I've had a lot of fun time with other contests, such as like robotics and, how was it? Um, I did archery, too. I'm pretty sure I got fourteenth place in archery and fourth place in robotics.
Awesome.
Thank you. So he was actually part of our inaugural robotics team. We got a robotics team this year. Um, we were able to get a grant from Texas four H to purchase the kits. They're like five hundred dollars for little robot kits. I don't know how Lego stuff is that expensive, but it is. Um, and we were actually able to send two teams to the district this year. Uh, we also got a donation recently, and we purchased another kit, so hopefully we can have more teams go next year and we won't have to limit it. Um, as far as the adult side of programming, we still have C E U things. Um, we just got done with what we are calling Certified Applicator Academy, which is a five-hour C E U for your pesticide license, and I did that in conjunction with Jasper County, Newton County, and San Oxi. So we did that over at the Call Baptist Church, and we, for the first year, we got a really good turnout. There was over forty people there. Um, so we're trying to do things that are a little bit more local as far as some of our bigger programs, 'cause I know a lot of our guys hate driving into Beaumont to do the big one at Fort Park, so we're trying to make sure we have those here. Um, we also launched Homemade in Harden County, which is a series where we went through not only cottage food law, but we also went through um, jams, jellies. We did some actual water bath canning. Uh, it was a really fun time, so I'm hoping to do that again and we can get that going. Um, the one thing that I will say I am the most proud of is that our natural resource education program, and I did not upload it right wrong, but that is okay. I will brag on myself here. Um, it won the Search for Excellence Award in environmental forestry and natural resource education through our State Association for Ag Agents, and this is actually the second time that I've gotten that award for our natural education program. Um, I also got it in two thousand twenty-three, so if you see the picture on there, that, that's me trying to hold everything that we got. Um, so for that, it does include our East Texas Wildlife Expo, which was in its third year this year, and also our Hunter Education, which continues to be a very big program. And we are trying to get more people to do it. We're actually, uh, I've been approached about being an area chief for that, so hopefully we can get some more people certified and put on some more programs with it. Um, lastly, we also did a new landowner workshop that was with the Texas A and M Forestry Service. That was provider, we had it at the Sillsby Volunteer Fire Department, and there was sixty people there, and it was all basically new people to Harden County. There was some of our old familiar faces, but a lot of them were people who were just coming into the county or might not even live in county, and they're trying to figure out how to manage their land. We really focused that around figuring out your management goals, and a lot of it was networking with our local organizations like Sethlaw, which is the Southeast Texas Forestry Landowners Association. That way, everybody could know what their resources were and feel comfortable coming to us if they had any questions.
Congratulations. Really nice, yeah.
I love this program.
Yeah, it's really grown a lot over the past, uh, when did you come here? About six years ago?
Yep, it'll be six years and no member.
Yeah, so you've done such a great job, Tammy and, and your staff. You've got some parents back there. Do any of y'all wanna speak or say anything? I think this is the picture you were talking about.
Yes.
Very nice.
Yes, we, uh, so that one was a, a word for that. We also got the Search for Excellence Award in four H programming for our veterinary science program. Again, I got that one in two thousand twenty-three, too. So it was kind of a repeat, but then a couple of those were for publications that we have put out, um, different ebooks. Uh, I won the category for a ebook as far as, um, well, actually, I think it was technically a publication that it went under. It was where we have created a document that is gardening in Harden County that is pretty much everything that we normally are gonna get asked, and it's all in one document that we give hand to people and say, here, here's all of, you know, the pertinent things. What grows best here? When should we plant? What can we kind of do to get the soil ready and all that? Um, so, and then a couple of them were just like second places. Those didn't matter as much.
And no samples of the jams or jellies?
No. I should've, but I left something in the refrigerator a little bit too long.
Well, thank y'all all very much for coming today. We really appreciate you. Congratulations on all of your accomplishments. And thank you for making sure everything runs smoothly.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate y'all. Y'all have a good day. All right, number seven is to consider adoption of Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-five proclaiming October, two thousand twenty-five as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as requested by Mr. Brocker, Crime Administration's Assistant Senate Director. Good morning.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? Anything you wanna say?
Just wanna say thank you so much.
Thank y'all for all you do.
Yes, thanks for supporting us. Judge, if I can.
Sure.
For just a second, I wanna speak about Silent Witness, which goes along with our Domestic Violence Month that we do every single year here in Harden County. So, um, within our police departments and even out in the public, within some businesses, um, we are able to put out our Red Ladies, and those are all victims of domestic violence that is either here in Harden, from here in Harden County or has a connection to Harden County. Um, I wanna say thank you to Judge McDaniel for working with us this year in order to be able to utilize the new touchscreens uh, here within the courthouse. We will actually be able to have those, um, those, those memories um, in, in honor of those victims posted on those flat screens. Um, and those will be, uh, we've worked with I T. Aaron and his I T team has been able to, um, really help us even, even to get that education and awareness out there even further. Um, and so we're just so thankful for y'all.
Well, we're thankful for y'all. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and Laura will have it ready for you shortly.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding the annual review and approval of the Harden County Investment Policy requested by Mrs. McWilliams. Good morning again.
Good morning. This is just the annual review that we have to do of the investment policy. I didn't change any of the wording or anything. I've checked all the laws to make sure everything returns back properly, but, um, as, unless y'all see something different, just proposing that we redo it at the same.
Just renew it at the same?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then number nine, consider adoption of Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty-five, reappointing the Honorable Deborah McWilliams as the county's Investment Officer pursuant to the Harden County Investment Policies. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? Thank you for all you do. We appreciate you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I guess this'll be the last time for that.
I guess so.
Yes, sir. Well, it just depends on
Maybe one more.
Technically, December of next year is when I'll retire, so we'll have one.
All right.
Maybe. We'll see.
Item number ten, consider approval of request to amend the fiscal year twenty-five rule, law enforcement grants, S B twenty-two budget, to utilize grant funds where needed as follows. Transferring thirty thousand dollars from the health, health insurance line item. Thirteen thousand, thirteen dollars will go into the safety equipment line item, and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars into the firearms line item. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Eleven, consider approval of request to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget to properly account for insurance proceeds received for courthouse repairs from roof damages as follows. Uh, increase revenue in line item zero, seven, one, three, six, one, one hundred, insurance proceeds in the amount of eight hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and increase expenditures in line item zero, seven, one, four, I'm sorry, five hundred dash four fifty. Courthouse maintenance, repairs, and renovations by the same amount, eight twenty-two, two twenty-seven. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
And that first line is a new, uh, new line item, just.
The revenue line item is new?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll also be creating that new line item? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of request to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget to adjust revenue and expenditures related to the regional radio system as follows. Increase revenue in, uh, zero, one, zero, three, seven, three, two hundred, regional radio reimbursement in the amount of one hundred, one thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars, and increase expenditures by the same amount in zero, one, zero, four, oh, one, four, two, four, regional radio system. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, consider approval of request to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget regarding the fiscal year twenty-four surplus carryover funds for R and B one and R and B four departments as follows. Transfer two hundred eight thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-four cents from the road and bridge fund balance. One hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine seventy-five, eighty-three will be transferred to the R and B one contingency in zero, one, seven, six, two, one, three, nine, five. And one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents will be transferred into the R and B four contingency, zero, one, seven, six, two, four, three, nine, five. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, consider approval of request to correct an amendment previously approved in Commissioners' Court on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five for R and B four to properly account for a transaction regarding trade-in and purchase of a Ford F one fifty truck as follows. Transfer thirty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars from zero, one, seven, six, two, four, five, seventy. Equipment purchase, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars will be transferred to the auto purchase line item, zero, one, seven, six, two, four, five, seven, four, and create a new line item, zero, one, seven, six, two, four, three, ninety. Dues and subscriptions in the amount of four hundred dollars. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, consider approval of request to amend the fiscal year twenty-five budget to accommodate expense associated with S B three eighty-seven legislation requiring an increase to the public official bond amount for the county judge as follows. Transfer one thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars from the visiting judge line item, zero, one, zero, four hundred, dash, four, one, six, to the bond expense line item, and that'll be creating a new line item in this budget, zero, one, zero, four hundred, four eighty, in the same amount, one thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? This legislation requires that I increase my bond since I handle guardianships and probates to five hundred thousand dollars. And so my bond expense, or bond expense for the county judge, whenever the term renews on January the first, twenty twenty-seven, will increase. I think I normally pay around four eighty-eight. Is that right? It's gonna go up to around seven thousand dollars due to that legislation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consider, and number sixteen, considering possibly adopt the Harden County Uniform Tax Adaptation Policy effective for two years pursuant to Texas Tax Code, section three, one, two, point, zero, zero, two, C. Is there any changes or just a new term?
Just me.
Has to be renewed every two years?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen, consider approval of an order authorizing the DeWali fireworks sales beginning October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five and ending at midnight on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eighteen, consider approval of request by Mr. Alex Parker, Floodplain Administrator, to approve replaid of part of blocks twenty-two and twenty-three, volume four, page one oh two, in blocks one A and two A of the William Wissa Division in the day landing cattle survey, extract number A dash six oh seven, Harden County, Texas, located in precinct three. You're aware of this?
Yes, I am, and, um, I'm with Cooper.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nineteen, considering possibly accept the Governor's Proclamation ordering November fourth, twenty twenty-five constitutional amendment, special election. Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, consider approval of request by Ms. Alyssa Freeman, Elections Administrator, to approve notice of election for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five constitutional amendment, special election, including the Village Mills Emergency Services District number eight sales tax proposition. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Anything you wanna say? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-one, consider approval of request by Ms. Alyssa Freeman, Elections Administrator, to approve an order of appointment for election judges and alternate election judges for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five constitutional amendment, special election. Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Is that right? All right. Seconded by Commissioner Cook then. You got it, Connor?
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cook?
Mr. Freeman, how does a person, uh, become an election judge?
So, um, the names are presented by each party chair, the Democratic or Republican, and then they're appointed for two years, um, each August, I think, of, of, every two years. Typically, we don't do an order every single time an election happens, but since we've consolidated, um, I've taken people who work those specific locations and added them to this one, because we had a few people that couldn't work.
So, uh, each party chair has to agree to this?
Actually, it's Commissioners' Court decision. So each party chair submits a list. I take the list, I bring it to the court, and then the court decides whether or not they wanna approve those judges.
And the same with the alternate?
Yes.
So if a member of the court has a problem with, uh, individual that's submitted, it would be left up to the court to deny or approve?
To.
Oh, a, a judge?
Yes.
That it, okay. And if I, as a commissioner, wanted to request, uh, who recommended, uh, one of these, you could provide the information to me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So just to make sure I'm clear, these election judges have been appointed for a two-year period as of last August?
Yes.
And this just, uh, consolidates these precincts for the constitutional amendment election and agrees to appoint these people to serve because they've agreed to serve?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number twenty-two, consider approval of request by the Honorable Mark Davis, Sheriff, to amend the fiscal year twenty-six schedule of sheriffs and constables fees to include new requirements pursuant to property code, chapter two, fourth B, to become effective January first, twenty twenty-six. Be a two hundred dollar charge to, uh, for an order to remove person occupying dwelling, and a one hundred fifty dollar per hour charge for additional law enforcement assistance. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-three, consider request by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director, to approve the updated retiree health insurance policy to become effective October first, twenty twenty-five. Good morning.
Good morning. And I, I did bring this to court, um, um, last court. Uh, this is just updating it staying, uh, stating that if, uh, somebody retires and they're eligible for alternative insurance plans, that they must notify the county.
And this kinda goes off of the discussion we had in the last meeting where Commissioner Cooper requested?
Yes, sir, and it actually reflects the form that we have the retirees sign. Um, they have, um, one chance to elect the insurance, the retiree insurance, and it's stated on them that they're signed, that they've signed, so this is just now put into policy as well, so we've kinda double-covered ourselves.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall? Seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-four, consider approval of request by Mrs. Harrington to appoint the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand six Harden County State League Pool Committee. You have some names to recommend?
Yes, sir. Um, the policy states that we must have an administrator, not a chair, and that will always be the H R director, so, um, I would, um, commend for the administrator.
Okay.
The members, uh, Judge Brewer, um, Commissioner Cook, Michelle Adority, and Monica Kelly.
And that's, uh, I think the policy says two elected officials and two employees?
Correct.
That meet, that meets the new policy, and that becomes effective October first. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Thanks, everybody, for agreeing to serve on that committee. I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to appoint as recommended by the HR director, and that's seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion?
Got a question. One of my employees asked me when they could donate, so is that going to be in open enrollment?
Yes, sir. It does begin October first, but what we plan on doing is discussing it with everybody, and prior to open enrollment, I will send out the policy, and then I will have the form attached separately so that way, everybody can fill it out and then just bring it to us.
Okay.
And then we'll have everything set up at that time. Also, if you recall, we will leave it open for one year so that way, people that get their time on the books within that first year will be able to donate as well because not everybody may, everybody may not have time in October.
Sure. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-five, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cook to enter into an agreement with the Hardin County Youth Soccer Club whereby this club will contribute or reimburse one thousand eight hundred dollars to Hardin County for the use of the Hardin County Veterans Park concession stands, soccer fields, normal utilities, and supplies. If approved, this agreement will be in effect from October first, twenty twenty-five through September thirty of twenty twenty-six. Commissioner Cook?
Yes, sir, this is the same agreement that we've had for several years. There's no change in it, just basically a regular one. I moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cook?
Ernie, do you know, offhand, I should have contacted you prior to this without putting you on the spot, asking this question, but do you spend on supplies more than this eighteen hundred yearly, you think? Just guessing?
Probably not. I mean, it'd be close to it with utilities.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I know back when this first started, this was the amount, but just I know that you keep an eye on that, it's whatever it sees that. We always talk to the soccer club, and we probably take care of it.
Well, it was fifteen hundred, and then two years ago, we bumped it to eighteen.
Okay.
To kind of cover some of the.
Increases.
Inflation issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-seven, considering possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for grant administration services pertaining to the application and implementation of awarded of the county's Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery, Local Communities Program, funding from the Texas General Land Office under two thousand twenty-four disasters, DR forty-seven eighty-one, Texas Fear Storms, and DR forty-seven ninety-eight Hurricane Barrel.
You skipped one.
I skipped one, but let's do this one, and we'll go back.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Can we, on the Evaluation Committee?
Yes, go ahead.
Commissioner Cook, Aaron Tepper, and Clay Woodward.
Y'all all agree to serve? All right. Is that included in the motion to appoint the Evaluation Committee? I can't remember who made the motion. All right.
Uh, Ernie.
Cooper. Cooper, do you have a?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's do number twenty-eight real quick. It's the same thing except that we're, I'm sorry, the purchasing agent is requesting the permission to do the same for the same program, but she's looking for an engineer and wants to appoint a committee here too as well. Same committee?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Let's go back to twenty-six. Consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to present results of bids received for materials and emulsions for all Roden Bridge appointments and a possibly awarded successful membership. See, I knew this one would be long, that's why I skipped it. But go ahead.
Can you do the low bid?
Yes, sir. There's something if you want to discuss or what you want to do. Bids for emulsions and materials were opened on September tenth, two thousand twenty-five at two PM in the purchasing department. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Pat Boyett were present. Seal coat aggregate, Vulcan materials at the plant for forty-five dollars a ton and delivered a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents a ton. Hot mix asphaltic concrete pavement, Texas materials at the plant, one twenty-three a ton and delivered a hundred and thirty-nine a ton. Hot mix cold laid asphaltic concrete pavement, Waller County asphalt at the plant for one oh five a ton, and Texas materials delivered for one hundred and fifty-one dollars a ton.
Can we get a number two for Waller County to be delivered as well? My only concern there is Texas material on the cold mix, sometimes it's real just clumpy, it's not good material.
Okay.
And that way, we could have an alternative.
You, can we just award both of them so that you're not having it go to number one first and then number two? I think that's what you're saying.
And so, that'd be one sixty-three oh five a ton delivered from Waller County?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Next one is limestone-based or equivalent road material, modern concrete materials at the plant, thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents a ton and delivered forty-five twenty-five a ton.
I would like to also award cap construction on this one at the plant.
Just the plant?
Better be both.
Okay. So, that will be at the plant for forty-six twenty-five a ton and delivered fifty-four twenty-five a ton?
Yes.
Next is slag coat products, cap construction at the plant, thirty-six dollars a ton and delivered forty-four dollars a ton. Coverstone, modern concrete materials at the plant, fifty-four dollars a ton, delivered sixty-three fifty a ton. Grade four and three eights washed pea gravel, modern concrete at the plant, fifty-four dollars a ton, delivered sixty-two dollars a ton. Field dirt, next dirt and dozer at the plant for six dollars and twenty-five cents per cubic yard and delivered twelve fifty a cubic yard. Pine ridge sand, next dirt and dozer at the plant, six dollars and twenty-five cents a cubic yard and delivered twelve fifty a cubic yard. Rapid road repair, Waller County asphalt at the plant, a hundred and ten dollars a ton, delivered one sixty-eight oh five a ton. Superpatch high-performance road pair mix, Texas materials delivered at one sixty a ton, and Waller County asphalt at the plant for one ten.
I would like to also, do Waller County deliver?
Yes, sir. We also do the plant.
The reason is because ninety-nine percent of the time, Texas materials does not have this.
Gotcha.
And Waller County, they're not a county company, they're a private company, but that's their name, but their materials so much delivered.
Before we go too much further, let's go back to that last one where you asked to appoint, to approve cap construction as well on the.
Fonds?
Yes, and just state the reasons so we have it on the record.
They're just very, they're local in our precinct, and sometimes it's just easier and faster to go and pick it up from there.
Okay, no problem with that, Ms. Sims?
Also, on the superpatch, could we do the bone went plant for pickup instead of having them delivered?
Yes.
Because for us to go all the way to Waller County to save, you know, thirty-five dollars a ton.
May end up being cheaper to go locally?
Yes.
Absolutely. All right, so let's get that on the record. Texas materials at the plant, there's two prices, which one?
The bone went plant.
It would be, yes, it would be bone went plant.
And so, that's one forty-five a ton, correct?
Yes.
And then plus the other items you've already read off, correct?
Yes, sir.
Delivered one sixty-eight oh five per ton from the Waller County plant, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, so the next one is one inch washed limestone, modern concrete materials at the plant, fifty dollars a ton and delivered sixty-one dollars a ton. Vulcan materials is also delivered sixty-one dollars a ton. Crushed concrete, modern concrete materials at the plant, thirty dollars a ton, delivered thirty-eight fifty a ton.
Can I do the same here?
Yes, let's go ahead and award cap construction as well for the same reason as the limestone.
And that's thirty-two dollars a ton at the plant and forty dollars a ton delivered?
Yes.
Okay.
We're doing both?
Yes, sir. If that's, if there's no objection? And for the same reason?
Next one is concrete stabilized sand, Martin Marietta at the plant, fifty-four dollars a ton and delivered sixty-five dollars a ton.
On that, my question is, so Modern has a bid for five sacks a cubic yard. Next has a five sack, do we know if Martin Marietta did the same thing?
That was in the spec, so they were supposed to bid five sacks per cubic yard. Yes, sir. The next one is OPF forty-two aggregate base, no bid. Ex seal five fifty, no bid. One inch by three inch crushed concrete, no bid. Three by five inch crushed concrete, no bid.
Back to the concrete, state glass sand, do we have that in writing for Martin Marietta that they are providing the five sacks per cubic yard? If not, can you get that?
Yes, sir.
And then if they're not, bring this back at the next meeting, please.
Is this the bid that Brian and Brian typically turns in on, or is it the other?
It's on emulsions, I believe. Yes, sir. I may do that. I want you to move to emulsions.
Any more discussion regarding the presentation here for road materials? All right, move on to road materials.
Emulsified asphalt SS one CRS two CRS two H, Cleveland asphalt at the plant, two fifty-five a gallon and delivered two dollars and sixty-eight cents a gallon. Asphalt item three hundred AC ten, Martin asphalt at the plant, two dollars and thirty-five cents a gallon, delivered two fifty-five a gallon. Road oil MC eight hundred, Martin asphalt at the plant, three dollars and seventy-five cents a gallon and delivered three dollars and ninety-five cents a gallon.
I would like to also award sleep on asphalt because they have superior product.
At the plant and delivered?
For both.
At the plant, it's four ten a gallon, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Based on a five thousand gallon load and delivered is four twenty-three gallon?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
AES three hundred, Cleveland asphalt at the plant, two dollars and ninety-five cents a gallon and delivered three dollars and eight cents a gallon. Prime coat AEP, Cleveland asphalt at the plant, two dollars and eighty cents a gallon, delivered two ninety-three a gallon. Tackle oil RC two fifty, item three hundred, Martin asphalt at the plant for three dollars and seventy cents a gallon, delivered three dollars and ninety cents a gallon. MC thirty, Martin asphalt at the plant for three dollars and eighty cents a gallon and delivered four dollars a gallon. And cracked fuel oil, Brian and Brian asphalt at the plant for six hundred and sixty-five dollars per ton and delivered six hundred and ninety-one dollars per ton.
Motion to approve, that's for good. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-nine, consider approval of request by Ms. Sims to authorize the county judge to execute change order number one with NNT construction related to hurricane safety instructions. Ms. Sims?
So, in July, on the twenty-second Commissioners' Court, we approved this increase as one hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Due to a rounding issue, this change order is one hundred and forty-nine dollars, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, so it's one dollar difference. So, that brings the total construction contract amount to five million four hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars.
Somewhere. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Young. Mr. Tepper has been staying on, and not just him, but the Grand Administrator, Melinda Smith, has been staying on PDM. We're still waiting on an answer from FEMA on that change request that we submitted back in the spring. So, but they are staying on top of that, and we're being squeaky wheeling, trying to get an answer, but FEMA's in shape. So, we're trying to get an answer on that, and hopefully we'll get it soon. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number thirty, discussion on any another non-agenda item without taking action, including announcements which may be addressed to the public? Is there any official presence that has any announcement items or discussion items they'd like to bring forward?
Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say, I went to conference last week, and there's a new change with Senate Bill sixteen. Now, when we come into recorded deed, we have to have a form of ID, where before we didn't have to.
It starts September first?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do y'all record their information, or they just have to present it?
We make a copy of it, and then we have to scan it into our C drive and keep it forever.
Is it specified in statute?
We shall.
I'm talking about what we consider ID?
Your driver's license, just a form of ID.
Thank you for that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any member of the court have anything?
So, a state ID, a state issued ID?
Right. Government issued ID.
So, library card wouldn't work?
No.
All right. Go adjourned. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Young, do adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.